Good evening. School Board members, Superintendent Carey, district staff, parents, students, and members of the Community Unit School District 201 Committee. I'm Mr. Wyler, Principal of Miller Elementary School. I have the privilege tonight of honoring some of our students that have earned some awards over the last semester. Thank you again for inviting us here tonight to celebrate not only diversity but commitment to excellence and drive our students have to be successful, not only in the classroom, but in life. Believe it or not, this definitely starts in the early ages impacted by our two wonderful elementary schools here in District 201. As we plan for this evening and highlight our students' strengths, we wanted to celebrate our Mustangs in a very special way. Staff members at Miller highlighted our little Mustangs in six categories: effort, excellence, most improvement, citizenship, being a role model, and having a positive growth mindset. We will be celebrating our fifth graders first tonight. Students, please join members of the school board up on the stage when you hear your name called. Parents, we'll stop in between grade levels and do pictures as well. Parents will hold all the students up on the stage for a photo opportunity at the end of each grade level and also at the end of Miller celebrating all six grades. So please join us as we welcome our first few guests. In fifth grade, Jonathan Hall. There she is. Come on up, parents, if you want to take a snapshot of our fifth graders at Miller. Awesome. Next with our fourth grade students, Zoe Abington. Fifth graders, you can have a stand over here on the side of the stage. And our final fourth grade student, Gregory Waleen. Come on up for a shot if you want a picture. Thank you, fourth grade students. You guys can head back to your seats now. Third grade students, starting with Katie Anema. Jada Perez. And our final third grade student is Carolina Pizano. Come on up, parents, for a picture. Thank you, third grade. You guys can have a seat. In second grade, Alex Acevedo. And Gianni Webb. Come on up, second grade parents, and get a picture of your kids. Awesome job, second grade. You guys can have a seat. Thank you. Starting us off in first grade, Jamia Bailey. Awesome job, first grade. Go ahead and have a seat. And our final group of the night is our kindergarten students, starting with Abraham Garcia. Brittany Voe. And our final student, Bilal Zeru. Come on up, parents. Lucy Kubick, come on up. She just got here, so we're going to give her a word up on stage. Kindergarten parents, make sure you get your picture. I hope to see everyone continue to set high goals and work towards fostering a respect for each other and determination to always do our best. Thank you for inviting us here tonight. And we thank our kindergarten students. Great job, Mustangs. Our motto is "Charge for Success." Kindergartners, you can have a seat now. Thank you so much. I'd like to introduce Kristen Kretzel, Principal of Manning Elementary School.
Good evening, school board, Superintendent Carey, District 201 family, friends. I'm Kristen Kretzel, the Principal at Manning Elementary, and tonight I have the pleasure of introducing you to our second semester award winners. We're going to start with our outstanding meteor. And just to discuss real quick what it takes to be an outstanding meteor, teachers were asked to pick, and sometimes they even surveyed the class, about classmates who are trustworthy, respectful, responsible, fair, caring, and overall a good citizen. We'll call them up by grade levels, and at the end of each grade level, parents can take a picture and then we'll dismiss the students back. Okay, we'll start with kindergarten. Alexander Batista. Natalie Nazgoda. Jacob Sebastian. Hannah Greenstein. Kamua Kohler. All right, way to go, kindergarten. You can have a seat. Our next group of second semester outstanding meteors are our first graders Maxwell Zenzmendera. Christopher Sandoval. Marisol Quintana. Samantha Kakavali. Jayden Repsis. Way to go, first grade. You can go ahead and have a seat. Our second grade students for outstanding meteor award, Mara Hindi. Unai Sadaba Intina. Isabel Kalakia. Derek Smith. Jermaine Echols. Okay, way to go, second graders. Our third grade's second semester outstanding meteors. I'd like to recognize Huda Ahmed. Dylan Connolly. Kate Stiles. Emily Sika. Tyler Lambert. Way to go, third grade meteors. Our fourth grade outstanding meteors, Kelly Clinton. Lola Morales. Giovanna Green. Stephen Dahl. Alondra Vargas. Congratulations, fourth grade. Way to go. And our last group of outstanding meteors to recognize tonight are our fifth graders. We'll start with Frankie Consiglio. Michelle Mayon. Isabella Medlova. Nathan Engelbrethson. Billy McGee. Way to go, fifth grade. Okay, our next group I'd like to call up to the stage, Grayson Heller. Martinez Boverishis. Charlie Cosar. All right, these Manning students are third, fourth, and fifth graders, and they each year are given an opportunity to participate in a math contest through the Illinois Council of Teachers of Mathematics. The contest is given to our students three times a year. Their scores are then averaged together to determine grade level winners, and the students with the highest average are recognized. So this year in third grade, as I read your name, please step forward. The first student from third grade is Grayson Heller. Grayson is a hard worker who enjoys challenges. He is able to problem solve and use his strategies to persevere through complex math tasks. We had a tie in third grade this year, so our second student is Martinez Boverishis. Martinez is a higher level thinker who uses persistence and determination to think outside the box. He is always eager to conquer difficult math problems. This year's fourth grade math award winner is Charlie Cosar. Charlie is a tireless mathematician who loves a challenge. He will never give up until he solves the problem. He is also a conscientious math student who enjoys helping others by giving them strategies rather than telling them the answers. And our fifth grade math award winner is Nicole Jonikas. Nicole is a thoughtful mathematician who is organized in thought and sees patterns readily to help her solve some of the most difficult challenges. She loves a tough task and perseveres in solving perplexing problems. Given her tenacity and mathematical ability, the future is bright for Nicole. Thank you. You can return to your seats. All right, the next two I'd like to call up to the stage. Nicole, you can come back. And Sidney Tibidell. So Nicole Jonikas and Sidney Tibidell. These two young ladies were chosen to receive the Illinois Principal Association Award this year. Let me tell you a little bit about each one. Sidney Tibidell, go ahead and step forward. Here's what her teachers have to say about her. Sidney is a dream student. She is at the top of her game academically, excelling in whatever challenges thrown her way. She doesn't shy away from hard work and instead is motivated to figure it out and do better. More important than her academic success is the role model she has for her peers and everyone in the school. Sidney is the epitome of kind and caring. She always has a kind word to say and is quick to point out the positives in difficult situations. She is respectful and responsible, but more so humble. She leads with a quiet presence that people respond to and respect. Students look to Sidney for her support and guidance. We are proud to have her, have had her in our school, and we will miss her. We wish her well in junior high, and we are confident that she will be back in this arena several times before her education is complete. Nicole Jonikas. Here's what your teachers had to say about you. Nicole is one of Manning School's two recipients of the IPA Award for Academic Excellence. Nicole loves to swim, draw, and hang out with her friends. She attends Lithuanian School Weekly where she takes art classes and homes her excellent skills in Lithuanian reading and grammar. She likes to walk her Boston Terrier and two miniature schnauzers and has a hamster named Smika. Nicole is an avid reader and loves reading inspiring stories about people and also quotes people about how to make life better. As a fifth grade student, Nicole has demonstrated high achievement in all academic areas. Her intellectual capabilities are coupled with her motivation to succeed, her willingness to help others, and the kindness she expresses to her peers. We are extremely proud of Nicole, and we wish her well at the junior high and are extremely proud of all of her accomplishments at Manning School. Thank you, ladies. You can have a seat. Our next group that we are going to recognize are our St. Jude's fundraisers, our top fundraisers. And Mrs. Walsh is here to tell you a little bit about it.
Thank you. Thanks, Mrs. Kretzel. Good evening. I'm Karen Walsh. I'm a fourth grade teacher at Manning School. I've been coordinating the St. Jude's Math-athon for the past five years. It's a labor of love. Once again, students at Manning School were asked to participate in the Math-athon to practice their math skills and to raise money to benefit St. Jude's Children's Research Hospital. This year, thirty-four Manning students participated in the Math-athon, and we raised $3,433.47. This would not have been possible without the commitment of students and parents who have learned to make a difference in the lives of others. We'd like to recognize those Manning students who raised $200 or more and learned about math with a real-world purpose. The first student we want to recognize is a first grader, and that is, if I find my names here, hang on. Our second place was Nikolai Baldwin in third grade. And we have our third highest fundraiser was Danielle Hoover, who's in fourth grade. And not to be outdone by her sister in third grade, Caitlin Hoover. Congratulations to these students. Congratulations to all of our meteors. I hope you have a great end of the school year, a great summer, and always remember to be respectful, be responsible, and be safe.
The first year that we did this here at the auditorium, I try not to take it personally. I do understand. Thank you to the Board of Education and Superintendent Kevin Carey and the CUSD community for having us here tonight. May is an extremely busy month, but it's always a great night to honor our students. There's definitely a certain amount of joy that comes to Ms. Quattrona and myself when we see our meteors and our Mustangs come up here and be celebrated. We know that eventually they're going to be ours, and we're excited about that. Also, this is the first year that as the high schoolers will come up after I'm gone, that we've had all of them come through Westmont Junior High School if they graduated out of eighth grade from CUSD 201. So there's a lot of satisfaction to that. I'd like the following individuals to come up, so I'm going to read off their I'd like the following individuals to come up, so I'm going to read off their names if you could hold applause until the end. I'd like to call them up and then I'll explain to you why they're being recognized. So Mackenzie Blaine, Michaela Kim, Emiliano Hernandez, Ethan Nguyen, Matthew Picard, Veronica Riston, and Abby Stromeyer. Try to be in order if you can guys. I know there's a few events going on tonight, so I'm not sure how many we'll have. Okay, these are the sixth grade students of the month. The sixth grade team is proud to recognize the following students who go above and beyond expectations. These students submitted original writing to be part of an exhibit of student work shared at the State Convention of Delta Kappa Gamma, an international group of key women educators. All Westmont Junior High School students were invited to apply. Writing was on a display at the Group State Convention in St. Louis where all attendees had the opportunity to read our students' work. So we're happy to call all these students Westmont Junior High School authors. We encourage them to keep writing as well. So first we have Michaela. And Michaela wrote some poetry. Next we have Emiliano Hernandez who wrote a short story. Followed up by Ethan Nguyen who wrote an expository text. And of course, Matthew Picard who wrote a short story. Parents, now would be a great time to take a picture if you'd like to do so. And we'll give them one more round of applause. Okay, go ahead and have seats. Next, I'd like to call up the following individuals. This is for the seventh grade awards. Jason Chapluskis, Michaela Hickey, Jordan Karish. Johnny, do you want to come up and receive her award? Come on up here. Caleb Clines, Mary Niemeyer, and Nora Schlax. Take your time Mary. You're good, you're good. So... You're okay, you're okay. I tell you to take your time and then I rush you. The seventh grade team would like to acknowledge the following students for their outstanding performance both academically and athletically. These students also contribute to the very positive climate at the junior high. So first we have Jason Chapluskis. Michaela Hickey. Jordan, who we have a substitute, her brother John, Karish. Caleb Clines. Mary Niemeyer. And now would be an awesome time to take a picture and we'll want to make sure that, no, stay up there. Which one of these does not look like the others? Let's give them one more round of applause. We have one more picture being taken right here. I saw him bump into you, so I know what happened. Go ahead, take seats, congratulations. Okay, and next, I'd like some eighth graders to come center stage. Ava Shimalouski, Colin Shimalouski, Haley Garduno, Anastasia Lipasek, Kayla Sleeper, Connor Sullivan, and Kathleen Zalinski. Please come on up and then I'll tell people why they should clap for you. So the eighth grade team would like to recognize the following students who went above and beyond in regards to the Student Service Learning Commitment. They have exemplified what it means to be high quality citizens. We hope that your commitment to serve others has enriched your life and you continue to seek out opportunities to give back. Thank you for being leaders at Westmont Junior High School as well as in our community and setting a high bar for the area of service. And so with that, I wanted to mention this is the second year of the Student Service Learning Commitment. So the students in front of you not only did their 12 hours last year or more, but they needed to do 15 hours this year. So let's see, if you're good at math, you probably know that equals 27 hours as a minimum in order for them to walk the stage and for graduation. And so we asked the group of seven, not all of them are here tonight, we asked this group of seven to do at least 189 hours, all of them together. Instead of doing 189 hours, they did 1,025.5 hours. So I think that deserves a round of applause. And so, the Shimalouskis aren't able to be with us, and so Haley Garduno. Anastasia Lipasek. Kayla Sleeper. Connor Sullivan. And Kathleen Zalinski. And parents, this is a great time to take a photo. Thank you not only for representing Westmont Junior High School, but the community, the service you do for our community. Go ahead and have seats. And next, our exploratory team would like us to recognize some students as well. I believe Jack Cosart is not here. Mark Dold and Avery Herman, please come to the stage. Oh, thanks Jack, thanks for coming. The exploratory team would like to acknowledge the following students for their achievements in band. These students were selected as Best of the Day Soloists at the IESA Solo and Ensemble Contest on Saturday, April 8th in Bradley, Illinois. Westmont was one of 11 schools to participate. We performed in nine rooms and each room's judge chose one outstanding performance of the day. So once again, 11 schools participated, there were only nine possible awardees for this award. Westmont Junior High School got three out of the nine, that's pretty amazing. And so, these two gentlemen... Avery's not able to be with us, but first, Jack Cosart, congratulations. And next, Mark Dold, congratulations. You are totally allowed to come up and take a picture. By the way, I can play the kazoo guys, I'm really good at it. So have seats, thank you. Next, if I can have the next three students, Katriona Druckney, Allison Anick, and Jack Rathburn, come to the stage. Okay, they're not here, but we're going to recognize them anyway. The exploratory team would like to also acknowledge the following students for being the top three fundraisers in our annual Hoops for Heart event for the American Heart Association. And so that was Katriona, Allison, and Jack. Thank you so much. And Mr. Baldorman, come on up.
Thank you Superintendent Carey and our Board of Education. Thank you parents for being here. I just want to say in the beginning, a few of our students came to me the last couple of days and said because of their work commitments or for different activities or sports, they could not be here, but they really... And I think that speaks to the commitment of our students, not just doing a great job in their school and activities, but a lot of our students have to work too, so we're very proud of them. Okay, we're going to start with our valedictorians and I'd like to recognize Yelena Mihalovich and Michelle Lonnie who were named the valedictorians of the class of 2017 out of a spectacular class. Congratulations ladies. Our salutatorians, Madeline Kim and Hannah Grace Mora. We also have other members from the top 10. Please come to the stage when your name is called. Sam Asa. Diana Turan. Zoe Okon. Amog Bupalam. Melissa Wilfong. Morgan Arons. Anna Lee Johnson. Kaylee Smith. And Joe Donovan. Just incredible students who, from a very talented class, these were our top students. Congratulations. Thank you all. They'll also be recognized at our graduation ceremony. Once again, another work commitment meant that Zach Muller, our state champion in wrestling, could not be with us, but we'd like to recognize him. We also have a highly successful, very talented and dedicated flags team. They were state champions in their category, we're very proud of them. Please, team members who are here tonight, if you could come to the stage. Robin Magnay. Natalia Stroup. Michelle Mansky. Natalie Bowers. Adeline Wagner. Kyle Nguyen. Alyssa Gibson. And the coaches, Megan Boyd and Emily Hayden. We're very proud of you, great job, state champion flag team. Congratulations Flags, we're very proud of you. At this time, I want to welcome to the stage Bridget Durbin, our longtime talented veteran teacher who's going to talk about BPA.
Good evening. BPA, Business Professionals of America, is the business club at the high school level that is the leading organization that helps prepare our students for life after high school and college. This year I had three students qualify for state competition, two of which are not here, but I do have, one is here. Maria Medlicott, she competed in intermediate Microsoft Office and she placed fourth in our regional competition at Lewis University. Lily Arnt competed in advanced accounting and placed second. And Melissa Wilfong placed fifth in payroll accounting. However, she placed 13th at state, which is just a tremendous accomplishment considering the size of the schools that we compete against. Some of our local schools have 100 students in the club and we finally beat Stevenson High School in accounting, so... Melissa, come on up.
Thank you Ms. Durbin. In the statewide Math Matters Competition, we had a student who finished third place, that's Hannah Mora. Hannah, congratulations. We also have a math and science competition called Teams and we had our team members qualify for the national competition down in Florida. They did spectacular, once again, competing against much bigger teams, they had no fear and outqualified many top-notch schools from throughout the state of Illinois. I'd like to call them to the stage at this time. Johnny Karish. Anika Bupalam. Luke Gifford. Lucy Prado. Megan Magtibay. Anahi Barajas. And their coaches here, Ms. Laura Purgandy, congratulations. It's really a neat competition, they do math and science. Great, thank you, congratulations team. If you've had the pleasure of hearing our band play, whether it's the jazz band or our concert band, you know it's just an incredible program led by Mr. Hank Vaughn. We're able to recognize just a few of the many talented students here this evening. We're going to start with the soloists who were ranked outstanding at the Purdue University Jazz Festival. Clayton Reeves. Amog Bupalam. Austin Brown. And Carlos Laland. Mr. Brown, welcome to the stage, we're glad to have you here. Congratulations. Our Outstanding Soloist Awards for Illinois State University Jazz Festival. Don't go anywhere Mr. Brown. Austin Brown. And Megan Magtibay. The awards keep coming for our band program. Our District One Honor Band, Hannah Wilgar was selected for the District One Honor Band. Congratulations to Mr. Vaughn and the entire band program, great job.
Okay, we have one other student recognition this evening and that's the SEAL by Literacy and Hector Freitas, our assistant principal at the high school. And Hector Freitas, our assistant principal at the high school, will come to the podium
Good evening, CUS 201 residents and Honorable Board and Superintendent Carey. It's my pleasure to present the Second Annual Seal of Bilinguality for Community Unit District So today, I'm gonna go over what is the seal, the history, the state's participating division and purpose, how to receive it, and what it means to be a Seal of Bilinguality recipient. So in 2011, California adopted the first state seal of bilinguality. New York passed it in 2012. In 2013, the seal of bilinguality was unanimously approved by the Illinois General Assembly. And in 2014, the state board released guidelines, adoption by school district around the state is voluntary. But when I saw that, I saw an opportunity for our students, an opportunity for our district. If you look at this map, the states in the blue are the states that officially recognize the Seal of Bilinguality. And if we made a map of the world, Europe has been doing this for about 30 years now. So we're just catching up in recognizing of more than one language. But I'm really proud to say the state of Illinois, we're in blue, and we're leading the movement. So here's the vision. Students from Westmont High School will be linguistically competitive with students from Illinois and throughout the world. We recognize that languages open opportunities, not only professionally and socially. So my job as a school administrator is to make sure that our students have the opportunities to be competitive in the global market. And the purpose of the seal of bilinguality is to encourage kids to study languages. Study languages. Learn one, learn two, learn three, because guess what? You're gonna be able to talk to that many more people, and when you go for your first job interview, guess what? That's the skill you get to put, and more than likely, they will pick you over a monolingual speaker. So how do you receive the seal? So first, you have to be proficient in two assessments, one in a foreign language and one in English. So we have the English route, where if you score an 18 or higher in the ACT, now that we do the SAT, those scores are about to be released, but you have to match the proficiency level in the SAT. And as far as the proficiency in a world language, you have to score a 3, 4, or 5 on AP Spanish, French, German, Japanese, Latin, or Spanish, or score intermediate-high in a district-approved assessment tool. Currently, we're using the AP scores as well as the Stamps Assessment. Those are the two assessments we are using to measure proficiency in the foreign language. Steps to receive the Seal of Bilinguality. Who can apply? All current high school seniors who demonstrate proficiency in both languages could apply for the seal. So this is what the award looks like. On their diploma, they will have a beautiful seal with the crest of the state of Illinois, just like that. And also, on the transcript that is made available to every college, they receive a statement that says, "Receive the Seal of Bilinguality." And colleges recognize that, and students are eligible to receive college credit. So I am proud to award these three recipients, so when I call your name, please come up. Diana Turan, State Seal of Bilinguality. Diana, please come up. Sam Marcialas, Columbia, come up. And Natalie Espinoza Chavez. Natalie, if you're here, please come up as well. So Diana, I believe, will be attending the Colorado School of Mines, one of the top engineering institutions in the United States. I believe Sam is pursuing his education at COD. And we have Natalie Espinoza. She's not here this evening. She will be attending Western Illinois University. So thank you very much, guys, and congratulations. And for those that are interested, if you look up Senator Iris Martínez from the north side of Chicago, she's the one that proposed this legislation back last year. So we have some current events, and like I said, recently now, you're able, you're eligible for college credit. For more information, you can visit isb.net, sealofbilinguality/d default.html, and you can look up the Seal of Bilinguality just as I presented today. Thank you very much.
And next, we have staff recognition, and first, we're gonna recognize our retirees from School District 201. Don Coiling, if you could please come to the stage.
Don joined Community School District 201 in 1977, a year after the senior high opened. He started as the senior high ninth supervisor, and two years later, became the district head groundskeeper, a position he held until his retirement. During his tenure, he was part of the group who established the WCMA and served as president and vice president multiple terms. Don retired on New Year's Eve 2016 after over 39 years of service.
And Jim Walker, if you could come to the stage, please.
Jim Walker began teaching in Community School District 201 in 1984 as a full-time physical and driver's education teacher. During his tenure, he served 19 years as a head wrestling coach and football coach for 18 years, serving as the head football coach for eight of those years. He also coached track for 10 years and baseball for four years. In 2013, he was inducted into the Illinois High School Wrestling Coaches Hall thing.
And we're gonna recognize two of our administrators, who received a special recognition from their peers through the Illinois Principal Association. So first, could John Jonak, our junior high principal, please come to the stage?
John Jonak embodies all the characteristics you would hope to find in an educational leader. John is student-centered, collaborative, compassionate, and committed to data-driven decision-making. Under John's leadership, Westmont Junior High School has achieved unprecedented success. Westmont Junior High School is a welcoming place for students, staff, parents, and community. During John's tenure, the junior high has changed its schedule to allow for enrichment opportunities and for additional teaching and practice, depending on the individual student's needs. Students are now required to complete a student-service learning commitment. This has provided opportunities for our students to see the importance of considering the needs of others and making a positive contribution to their community. John has created a sense of community in the junior high. Congratulations on being named the Illinois Principal Association's eighth area junior high principal of the year.
And Jack Baldorman, if you could come to the stage, please. Since Jack's arrival at Westmont High School, Westmont High School has seen an unprecedented, also unprecedented academic success. Westmont High School is ranked as one of the best high schools in Illinois and in the country by Newsweek, The Washington Post, and US News and World Reports. We have a 100% graduation rate for our underrepresented population for the last two years. In addition, we have seen a significant increase in percentage minority and low-income students taking an AP course and passing an AP exam. The changes at Westmont High School and Jack's leadership go beyond the academics. Mr. Baldorman emphasizes the importance of making Westmont High School a positive, peaceful place and treat each other with compassion. Mr. Baldorman has the leadership skills to have a school rallying around a higher purpose, put aside individual interests, and focus on the bigger picture. Congratulations to Jack Baldorman for being named the Illinois Principal Association High School Principal of the Year.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comments. I first wanted to remind anybody, if they wanted to speak during public comments, that if you could complete the card provided at the sign-in table, if you could state your name before making any comments, and then please limit comments to five minutes. I do have a card here, Stanley Turner. And before we, before we start, I just have another thing to, we didn't add this on there. It is not the practice of this board to discuss individual students by name or anonymously in open session. It is the responsibility of the board and the school district to protect the confidentiality rights of all of our students, making it unlawful for you to speak about them or their issues in a public forum. Okay, now, Mr. Turner?
Thank you. On the school board and the parents of our students, sadly, the subject that I have to introduce is not so celebratory, but of course, we don't live in a utopia. I actually have an eight-page report. I'm only gonna read maybe about two paragraphs. Anyone on the board or otherwise who would like to have a copy, I'd be happy to give you one. This has to do with the bullying of my son, who's an eighth-grade student at Westmont Junior High School. And by the way, my name is Stanley Turner. William is an eighth-grade student at Westmont Junior High School in Westmont, Illinois. On Tuesday afternoon, April 25th, I learned from his mother that Will was being bullied at school. She told me that she had emailed the school about this matter and gotten a response from the school. She told me that the school had looked into the matter and assured her that this would not happen again. I then spoke with my son that Tuesday evening, April 25th, and asked him to explain to me in detail what had been going on. Will explained to me that over the course of six days, he was being agitated, aggravated, harassed, picked on by three young men in his eighth-grade class, against his wishes and to the point of feeling anger and sometimes rage. In hearing my son's explanation, I learned several facts. Fact number one, that Will had been slapped in the face approximately 40-plus times and hit in the face one time with force with a soccer ball. Fact number two, my son Will had been slapped, not tapped, hard enough to make his face red and hard enough to leave a mark, although no mark was made, per Will. Fact number three, the behavior of these young men was, to them, entertainment, recreation, fun, a game designed to purposely provoke my son Will to anger. Fact number four, my son Will not only did not invite this behavior, but asked them numerous times to stop and tried to stop it himself by taking this matter into his, into his own hands by doing the following. Number one, asking them to stop. Number two, throwing pine cones at them. Number three, participating in a chase and trying to catch them game where he was told, "If you catch us, we will stop," but without any success. Number four, by being asked by a friend if he wanted him to catch one of them, and he did so, Will punched him without force, conscientiously and purposely, without intent to do harm, fearing the consequences in the back of his head. Fact number five, my son Will was unsuccessful in bringing this bullying against him to a halt. Fact number six, it put my son Will in a mental, emotional, and physical space where he was on edge and feeling that he constantly had to watch out for them and know their whereabouts at all times unless he gets slapped in the face again by one of them or all of them simultaneously. And then just one last paragraph, I'll read a portion. Today is Tuesday, May 16th, and nothing that I know of has been done further about this bullying episode by the Westmont Junior High School administration, nor has anything been done by, that I know of, by the Westmont Police Department in terms of my wishes to press charges against these young men. My purpose is to expose this clear disparity in handling this matter, I believe because of race, that violates all schools' anti-bullying policies. To the board and to the parents, you know, it takes more than one entity in our community to extinguish behaviors that are unacceptable. And I would just like to ask the board, ask the staff of Westmont Junior High School, the police department, and the community, you know, if we would do all that we can in the implementation and execution of our anti-bullying school policies for the purpose of extinguishing this sort of behavior, lest it escalate into something that could be rather dangerous, not just now, but perhaps later in the lives of these young men. And so if, if the school board and the...
Mr. Turner, your five minutes is just about up here.
If the school board, along with the rest of the entities in the community, would be kind enough to bring to bear on this matter resolution, not only would me and my family be happy about it, but I think it would really best serve the interests of the community as well as these young, young boys. Thank you.
Okay, we have another speaker, but I just would like to reiterate two things. Number one, it is not the practice of this board to discuss individual students by name or anonymously in open session. It is the responsibility of the board and the school district to protect the confidentiality rights of all of our students, making it unlawful for anyone to speak about them or their issues in a public forum. The school district has policies and procedures in place that address bullying. If people believe that a child is a victim of bullying or abuse, the information should be shared with the appropriate district personnel, and a board meeting would not be a time or place to resolve these issues. Okay, then we have another, Nick Glenn.
Thank you, Board, for having me. I just want to address two issues that Mr. Turner talked about. There were two investigations that went on with this incident. The police department did investigate this incident. I spoke with Mr. Turner on three separate occasions. The first two were just me and Mr. Turner and his son, and on the third occasion, I brought my supervisor in to speak with him, so my supervisor could get all the details and get all the facts, just in case I was missing anything. At no time did we find any probable cause that any type of crime existed, that any battery of any type existed, except for the battery that was committed, I won't name names, but by Mr. Turner's son. We did not press any charges. We did not go after Mr. Turner's son. There, in my opinion, in my professional opinion, this is something that is blown way out of proportion, and I've explained that to him as he has come in. But I would also like to speak on behalf of the junior high school investigation that they did. They did an outstanding job on their investigation. They left no stone unturned, basically making my job extremely easy as far as a police investigation. I don't know how many 10, 20, 30 students, probably more than that, that they spoke to, all giving the same story that this was more of a game than anything. There was no battery. There was a brief bullying incident involving a soccer ball, which they handled, but other than that, there was nothing else. So I want to make it very clear, there were no criminal actions in this, nor will we be bringing any criminal actions against any of the kids involved, including your son. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for giving me a couple minutes up here. As you know, my name's Christopher Coyle. The reason I wanted to step up here briefly was to let you know that my wife and I have a daughter that attends Miller School. She's gonna be in second grade next year in the dual-language program, which we're really proud of. My wife is involved in the school and the PTO. I'm involved as co-president of the Bilingual Parents Advisory Committee. Excuse me. So what I'm asking is, we would like you, as the board, the school board, to please consider implementing grade-level centers within our district. We believe that doing so in our district would help us budgetarily, if we have any constraints. We think it would help unify our students and... We think it would help unify our students and curriculum within the district and better prepare our children for their junior high experience. Myself, I am a District 60, grade-level center student, Holmes, Marker, Westview, and then, of course, I graduated here from Westmont High School, sophomore, junior, senior year, I was here. So again, thank you for your time. We just would like you to please consider grade-level centers within our district. As I said, we do believe that it'll help unify the district, the students, and our curriculum throughout the district. So thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Coyle, before you leave, we do not, you know, engage in conversations at the board level, but I just wanted to follow up with you. Why don't you get in touch with Mr. Carey because just...and again, I know the age of your daughter is very young, but there...these issues were discussed, and I'll just have you, you know, refer to Mr. Carey on that specific item.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comments? Okay, then we'll move to the consent agenda. Any questions? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Number one, personnel recommendation. Licensed staff: Anna Jakobowski, English teacher, Westmont High School; Daniel Finlayson...sorry about these...Physics Chemistry Teacher, Westmont High School; Anna Kineman, Summer School Reading Math Teacher, Westmont Junior High School; Megan Vervannick, Summer School Reading Teacher, Westmont Junior High School; Vanessa Afri, Dual Language Teacher, Miller Elementary School; Shannon Mikicek, Summer School Elementary Reading Teacher, Westmont Junior High School; Joanne Bruckner, Summer School Elementary Reading Teacher and Teacher Assistant, Westmont Junior High School; Support staff: Mary Ann Besenin, Temporary Special Project Assistant District Office; Brandon Bayer, Temporary Summer Worker District-wide; Kaylee Price, Temporary Technology Support District-wide; Two, Appointment of School Treasurer; Three, Review and Award of Asphalt Seal Coating and Repair Bid; Four, Approval of May 2017 Expenditure Report; Five, Ratification of April 2017 Regular Payroll; and Six, Resolution to Abate Working Cash Funds.
So moved.
Second.
The resolution...there was no resolution. We did not need it, so these are moved.
I apologize. We are taking off the last one, Resolution to Abate Working Cash Funds. So, let's go back to the motion.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Ms. Ambrose.
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Knappus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Charlton.
Yes.
Okay, the first item for discussion is proposed student handbook revision, second reading.
And Tim Wyler is here this evening. If you recall at our last board meeting, Kevin Weck was present to answer any questions the board may have regarding the recommended handbook changes. This is the second reading. Tim Wyler is the co-facilitator of the committee, and after the board has any of their questions answered later on, the agenda, we'll be asking the board to approve the recommended changes.
Awesome.
Anyone have any questions about the revisions that were proposed, mainly in the junior high handbook and the high school handbook? Just a lot of redundancy that was moving some items around. Last year, the elementary did a huge overhaul of the handbook, and we had nothing but dates in the new year and updates of staff to put in the elementary handbook.
Okay.
Excellent.
No questions? Okay.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, J.T. Manning Elementary Title I School Waiver.
And Nadine Norris, our Director of Technology Teaching and Learning, is here to briefly explain what is being proposed with the waiver for Manning. And again, pending the board discussion later on in the agenda, we'll be asking the board to approve the waiver. Nadine?
Title I provides improving academic achievement for disadvantaged students. It provides that all students have an equal opportunity for high-quality education. It measures progress against common expectations and assessments, and closes the achievement gap between high and low-performing students. The Title I models that we have access to are either targeted assistance, which is for schools that are at least thirty-five percent low-income and under forty percent, or school-wide, which is at least forty percent low-income. If you recall, a couple of years ago, I believe it was two years ago, Manning...no, Miller, the junior high, and the high school, who were over forty percent low-income, were able to access Title I funds through school-wide. Manning has, in recent history, has only been able to access Title I funds once in a targeted assistance model, which means that the funds have to be used for specific purposes to support our students who are at risk of failing. So the low-income students help us access the federal funds, and then we use those federal funds to close the achievement gap between our low-income students and our non-low-income students, or our students who are at risk regardless of their income. Recently, the state of Illinois put in a proposal for our portion of the ratification of ESSA, which is the new NCLB, and part of that provides the opportunity for schools that are at least twenty percent low-income to apply for a waiver to access Title I funds on a school-wide program. So currently, Manning is twenty-nine percent, which would make them typically ineligible to access Title I funds in general, but with this waiver, they can not only access Title I funds in a targeted assistance, but we can apply for the grant to support Manning in a school-wide model, which means that funds can be used for any program that would improve the function of the school in general. So the materials that I provided for you is the application that we will submit to the state upon your approval. And the justification for this particular waiver are twofold. Number one, because Miller has received Title I funds for several years, they've been able to provide resources that are not just to help our at-risk students, but to improve our resources for the educational program school-wide for Miller. So Manning has been unable to access Title I funds, so there's a bit of inequity in terms of the materials. And secondly, we have to address the academic achievement gap in order to justify our application for this waiver. And based on last year's PARC scores, there's a pretty wide achievement gap between those low-income students and the students that are non-low-income. So we've addressed...we are going to address those...that achievement gap in our school-wide plans when we are able to access the school-wide Title I funds. Hope that answered any questions? Do you have any other questions or need any further explanation?
Is this something that is common? I mean, do we think this will be something that we will be able to get?
This waiver, this is the first time it's been available. So when I went to Springfield for a meeting for the Title I Directors, the ISBE staff encouraged school districts in this position to apply for this waiver. What this provides is the ability to use Title I funds district-wide and help us look at materials and programs and professional development that we can do in more of a consistent system-wide plan versus doing something for Miller because they have a school-wide Title I program and not being able to access Title I funds for Manning. Okay? All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, dual-language program. Hector Freitas, are you going to...
And for the board, you know, the next two items to do a language program report in the Westmont High School Class Rank Discussion are both PowerPoints, which you can follow along on your iPad, or I don't know if the board would prefer to move to the audience to view those. It's up to them. You're okay? All right.
Is it the same thing?
Yes. Yeah, but what will be behind this is the same thing that's in the board book.
Good evening again, honorable board members and Superintendent Carey. So this is the second annual dual-language report, but first of all, I would like to thank Principal Wyler, if he's still...Principal Wyler, you're over here, Brian. So first of all, I want to thank Principal Wyler from Miller. He has been a partner with me in growing the dual-language program. He has supported his staff. He has allowed for PLC days to actually work at other campuses, and you know what? He has done an amazing job hiring and putting the right people in the right places. So thank you, Tim. You've done a terrific job in supporting our dual-language program. So an overview, I'm going to review our three-year plan, our parental involvement, academics, and La Cosecha, the National Dual Language Conference. So our three-year plan, by the end of 2018, 2019, says you to one, we'll have an effective and resource K through five-grade dual-language program. Third grade was added in 2016, 2017, and fourth grade will be added this upcoming school year. So as you can see, our program is growing, and we are meeting our SMARCO. That's just a little graphic that I prepared. What do we do? We're going to, of course, interview, select the best candidates, and definitely do it before the end of the school year so they can get acclimated to the environment, meet their colleagues, and kind of see what we're doing. So just a little template of our three-year plan. I'm really proud to say that our dual-language program, we have a Parent Bilingual Advisory Committee, our VPAC, and we are co-presidents here. One thing that I loved about the passion of these parents, that they want to support every resident of Community Unit District 201, so much so that they asked me, "Hey Hector, can we bring legal experts to educate and support our families?" So we've done two workshops. We've invited one of our own community residents, a lawyer, and one of Chicago's top lawyers, to kind of give the best advice to parents who may find themselves in a precarious situation. So I was really proud that that really developed organically out of the need of our parents. They wanted to support their neighbors. Well done. And we just celebrated our second annual multicultural celebration. If you can see the picture there, I want to say there was about fifteen different countries represented, fifteen different languages, again, really showing the richness and diversity of our beautiful community. Very well attended. We ate well, and some people sang and danced, and we had a great time. But this is an amazing, progressive, and diverse community, and that's an example of all of our wonderful residents. Academics, currently, our dual-language program is developing bilingual unit frameworks. That is the model of best practice when developing curriculum for a dual-language program. And in a nutshell, you kind of develop the English part, you develop the Spanish part, and then you have a bridge that connects two languages. So that bilingual unit framework followed those steps. I was blessed that last year, I wrote a bilingual excellence grant, and with those $10,000, we were able to get a top consultant and pay the teachers for their hard work that they did over the summer. So now they're excited, and they have the curriculum to teach. We're still developing, but they're definitely underway. Assessments, we finally agreed on a common assessment, EDOL II, that is going to test fluency, comprehension, and word study. We've always measured the success with our formative assessments, what the teachers do every day. If you want to know, just ask. "How was my son and daughter doing in your class?" They'll show you evidence, but now we want it to have something standardized so we can complement what we do in the classroom with a national model as well. So we'll be using that in the upcoming school year. We had extra PLC days for dual-language articulation, and we had a great working experience. With the permission of Mr. Wyler, we sent our teachers off to Bolingbrook, where they worked at a center that has many dual-language resources. So as the teachers were working, they got to see the materials that they would use. That's one of the teachers' most powerful experiences, quoting them. We have, I believe, two of our teachers are pursuing a master's in dual-language at Roosevelt University. They're the first cohort of teachers to do so in the state of Illinois and possibly in the country. So now dual-language, a master's in dual-language, that is relatively new. So I'm really proud to say that our teachers have embraced that challenge. They want the most current knowledge in pedagogy to teach our kids well. So you guys, the board, excuse me, you guys should be very proud of the hard work that the teachers are doing. And briefly, I was able to send two teachers with our Title III, which is the title money dedicated to English-language learners, to Santa Fe, New Mexico, November 9th through the 12th, for the National Dual Language Conference. And in a nutshell, you see there, there were 2,300 participants from thirty-nine states, nine countries, and five nations. This is the big one. This is the one where all the teachers want to go, and I tell them, "I could only send two of you guys a year, okay? We have a budget." But we've worked kind of a rotating schedule, so next year, we'll be able to send a different cohort of teachers. In this conference, they build relationships, they obtain curriculum, they got quality materials, and they got to visit another school in New Mexico that's doing a great job in dual-language. So what the students need to do to develop oracy? Oracy, speaking orally, is proven to lead students to become good readers and good writers. So you always want to start, right, with oral language. So the teacher will focus on working with friends, groups, vocabulary, social interactions, because if they start teaching the kids how to speak the language, then reading and writing will follow. That's really the big deal in dual-language. You want to get the kids to start speaking, and our teachers are doing that. Just an interesting artifact, you know, that shows, you know, different words to use when speaking, different phrases, vocabulary poster. And then here, we have teaching for bilingual CPD. So on Saturday, February 4th, our teachers attended. Again, this was on a Saturday. Look at the commitment of our teachers. And this one, I didn't tell them. I didn't tell them. Go. They told me, "Hey Hector, we want to go to PD on a Saturday." I'm like, "No, it's your day. Go ahead." But you know what? Again, that's the commitment of our dual-language teachers. They're learning on their own on Saturdays. Amazing, amazing. And then these are just different...excuse me, these are just different artifacts that the teachers were able to use and manipulate with at the conference. And those are our two teachers. That is Ms. Gonzalez, and that is Ms. Garcia, that attended the La Cosecha, the National Dual Language Program. So again, to the board, I would say our program is growing very well. We feel supported from district office. We feel supported from the building level. We have amazing parents that support our program. We have amazing students, and as you guys know, there's many people that are coming here to be part of this amazing dual-language program. With that said, I just wanted to share, this has been an amazing two years working at CUSD 201. Next year, I will not be returning. I accepted a principal position in the city of Chicago. I'll be continuing the work of one of my heroes, Dr. Pantoja. So I just want to say, it has been a pleasure working with you all. You guys are committed human beings. You guys are terrific. You guys are honest. Since day one, when I sat down with you all, I knew the community did a good job as electing you as officials. It's bittersweet, you know, leaving. I'm going to miss you guys. Thank you very much. Thank you. Hector.
And good luck, Hector, in your new school. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Westmont High School Class Rank Discussion.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Carey, Board of Education, for allowing us to present this information that we have been gathering so far this school year about the possibility of eliminating class rank here at Westmont High of eliminating class rank here at Westmont High School. To provide a little bit of background, we have had a lot of information collected throughout this entire school year. We have had multiple committees that we have formed through our guidance department, we have our guidance advisory council, we've had student input, staff input. We have collected information from the Illinois Association for College Admission Counseling, IACAC, as well as from the Illinois Student Assistance Commission, ISAC, as well as the National Association for College Admission Counseling. Through surveys that we have collected, as well as, um, input we've received from many of our community groups, we wanted to take this opportunity and share this data with you and ask for your input. And we really value your input here, and we appreciate, you know, the, the feedback that you provide us about how we can make Westmont High School even better for our students. The reason that we started looking at class rank and what class rank means at Westmont High School is because of the number of students who had come to tell us that many of their surrounding high schools have already eliminated class rank. And that's really how this discussion started, how this topic came to us here at Westmont High School. Not just some of our local larger high schools like Hinsdale Central, Hinsdale South, all four of the Glenn Bard schools, but unit high schools in the area, the, um, Elmhurst Unit District, um, two oh five, as well as many smaller schools, Lyle High School and Fenwick High School, they have already gone through this process over the last eight to ten years in eliminating class rank. So that's why we started looking as a department initially, talking about, well, why have they moved towards eliminating class rank? Could this help our students? And that's really the basis of this presentation and the research we've done, to share with you the reasons for continuing keeping class rank here at Westmont High School, as well as the possibility of eliminating it. So I'm going to move through a few of our slides here. Why rank our students? We went through the conversations that we've had here so far throughout this school year. We talked about the reasons to keep it. And all of the feedback we've received as far as the reasons to keep it is due to tradition, and we value that tradition. It's a way to recognize how students compare to each other, as well as to recognize students in the top ten of their class. We recognize those students on an annual basis, primarily at graduation, and it does factor into the awards that we share with students at the conclusion of their senior year. Then we also asked our committees, our guidance advisory council in particular, why eliminate class rank? Why have other schools moved to this, and why should we consider this here at Community Unit School District two zero one? We have found through research that other schools have done, um, as early as Stevenson High School in two thousand and six and York High School in two thousand and two, that they have data that supports more students being accepted into four-year colleges and universities without including class rank on transcripts. That allows schools, colleges, and universities at the four-year level to specifically focus on individual students without comparing them to their counterparts. High achieving students also feel more free to take classes without the pressure of being at the top of their class. A lot of our students felt that from student input, that they could take classes, like in our elective, um, offerings, our art classes, business classes, many of the classes that they want to explore to consider, is this a career for me in the future? We also surveyed our students, as well as our teachers, in, um, how they are impacted by the stress and anxiety that class rank causes them. And the last part that came up constantly was that class rank, it is a system that guarantees that some, some of our students are going to lose. And this is something that we thought as a department, as a school, as a staff, is this a system that we necessarily want to continue, or is this something that we should consider revising and updating within our school district? I'm going to go on and talk about each of these points briefly, and then I'll leave it open for any questions that you have. Colleges will look holistically at students if rank is not included. So they're going to be looking at students' grade point averages, they're going to be looking at students' extracurricular involvement, as well as their SAT, ACT scores. They want to see how a student performs based on his or her own merits, as compared to comparing them to their counterparts. As I mentioned, the Stevenson High School study in two thousand and six showcased that majority of their students increased their college four-year offerings. And as recently as York High School in two thousand and twelve, they actually increased their four-year, um, college matriculation from forty-eight percent to seventy percent in a two-year span, from two thousand and twelve until two thousand and fourteen. Top admission factors through the Illinois, I'm sorry, through the National Association for College Admission Counseling, NACAC, showcased that the highest factors in college admission, the things that colleges and, um, universities look for when students submit their applications, are their grades, the strength of the curriculum at the specific school, how many AP and honors classes we offer, those students' test scores, and then the grades that they've actually received overall. Class rank accounted for about fourteen percent when we look at this chart of considerable importance. We then sent out surveys through the Illinois Association for College Admission Counseling and found that the rank is not even a factor for majority of, um, colleges and universities. They don't consider it as part of the process. University of Illinois is an example. They will look at it, and having sat on the mock admissions committee now three times in my career at the University of Illinois, as well as through DePaul University, I can tell you, it's not a factor that they specifically look at in that admission review process. We then surveyed and asked them if a school, if a student does not provide class rank on a transcript, does this negatively impact them? And overwhelmingly, ninety-seven percent of colleges and universities that responded to us said, no, it does not negatively impact them at all. The schools that did have that yes factor, um, were in Texas. So that's the feedback that we received from throughout the nation. One brief example I wanted to point out, this is just a hypothetical, if we at Westmont High School compared one of our students to a student who attended XYZ University, and all of their data was the same, they had the same GPA, the same test scores, really the same rank, they were ranked both fifteen in their class, and the same cali, they had the same caliber of extracurriculars. If there was one admission position that was available at one specific college or university, the student that would be more likely to be accepted is the student from XYZ University because of the fact that there are more students in that graduating class. So from a percentage-wise, those students are ranked fifteen, that student, for example, is ranked fifteen out of a hundred and ten, and that student actually has a higher percentage as compared to the student from Westmont High School ranked fifteen out of a hundred. Now hypothetically, if this was changed, and we had listed that that student's rank at Westmont High School was unavailable, the Westmont High School student now would have a higher likelihood of being accepted because their college/university would reach out to us at Westmont High School asking for additional information. As counselors in the guidance department, we receive requests for additional student information constantly. And we reach out to the students' coaches, their teachers, we ask for additional letters of recommendation. And that provides an additional opportunity to showcase our students in a positive light. If rank continues to be, um, part of the process, many times that cuts the review process at that point. It stops it, and it doesn't allow many of our students to have this be showcased, some of their additional strengths that they have experienced throughout all of West, all of their time at Westmont High School, grades nine through twelve. That's the college part. Impacting awards, it, many times, um, we provide, well, we offer Illinois State Scholar Awards here at Westmont High School, and it's an annual thing presented through the Illinois Student Assistance Commission at Westmont High School, through the state of Illinois. This is based, this award is based on class rank as well as, um, students' test scores. There's standardized test scores, ACT scores and/or SAT scores. If rank is unavailable, as many high schools have gone to already, the Illinois Student Assistance Commission utilizes students', um, unweighted GPAs. Class rank, we have ten students that are going to be in our top ten that we would submit. Many times we do have ties. For example, this school year, we have thirteen students in our top ten. If we provided unweighted GPA, there would be multiple ties for students who have exactly a four-point-oh or exactly a three-point-nine. That combination of unweighted GPA with students who have high test scores could potentially allow us here at Westmont High School to have more students honored as Illinois State Scholars. So this was another factor that came up in our conversations and discussions here. There are rigorous courses here at Westmont High School, and when I was talking to some of our students throughout the last few days, saying that I was preparing for this presentation, they said, well, can I come and share my side of it? And I do have two students here today who I'm very happy stayed around and wanted to share their student perspective, so I'd like to welcome them to the stage right now, so that they can share their thoughts with you as well. Because these next few slides, I could absolutely talk about, but they were very anxious in staying and presenting their perspective. And again, I really do appreciate it, and I always say that our staff, our school board members, everyone here in our community appreciates student input. So I'm going to turn it over to, um, Amog, as well as Caitlin, talk a little bit about their side.
Hey. So, uh, many of you guys already know me. I am friends with, uh, some of your, uh, some of your kids at the high school, some, one of them, uh, playing the same instrument as me in the Westmont High School band. And, uh, yeah, let's talk about the band really quick, along with all these other courses. So during my four years at the high school, I, I came to realize that, that there are, that I gotta, well, I, I thought to myself, okay, I need to take the most rigorous schedule as I can. I need to take as many AP classes, I need to take as many honors courses, so I can, so I can bump up my GPA, make it as high as possible, so I can look better for colleges or universities that I apply to. And then, and in doing so, I believe after, after reflecting and looking back, that I missed out on a, some of the great opportunities that these classes provide. And, um, this, this year specifically, two of the cla, there are two classes that I took that weren't, that weren't honors, they weren't AP, but I believe that they were two of the most useful classes that, or courses that I've ever taken here at the school. And those two courses, uh, being, uh, computer applications, as well as consumer economics. And do you want to know why I took those classes? Because the AP classes that I wanted to take originally wouldn't fit in my schedule, so I had to add some filler courses to bump, to keep myself as full-scheduled student. And in doing so, and by taking these classes, such as in consumer economics, I learned how to, how to buy a car, how, what, what to do when I'm trying to be a first-time homeowner, what to do with my funds once I, once I get a job, what, what to do if I'm trying to start a small business, a bu, a bunch of useful, practical things, as long with, uh, the computer apps, which taught me, uh, specifically advanced computer apps, that taught me about how to use Microsoft Excel in a more advanced manner, such as instead of just plugging in , uh, points of data, I learned how to create pivot tables, which would make, and spark lines and pivot charts and things like that. And that may, and that in the future, I believe, would make me a much better-looking, uh, person for when I'm applying for a job compared to other people. And then also, uh, if you look up at these rigorous courses, you see that there are a bunch of classes like medical science and, uh, earth science. And, uh, say a student wants to become a doctor, and I myself was thinking about becoming a doctor, however, in the end I chose, uh, that I wanted to major in something else. And, um, so this, this student who wants to become a doctor, they too, they think, okay, they thought that, they think the same as I did, I got to take as rigorous of a schedule as possible, and, uh, that'll make me look good for college. And then, let's say they get into the school that they want to, and they go in with a pre-med track, and then they realize after a few years, okay, this is not what I want. And then they choose, and then they decide on a new major. Well, now they, they might need another extra year of schooling, which would cost them thousands of dollars, which that, and that completely offsets the amount of money that they got by taking an AP class, when they, uh, potentially could have taken the medical science class and realized, oh, okay, this isn't, this isn't what I, what I thought it would be, this is not what I want to do as a career. And, um, with an unweighted, without, uh, class rank, students would not feel as pressured to take all these strenuous classes, uh, because, uh, they, they wouldn't have to, they wouldn't feel the need to compare themselves to other students. And by taking classes such as medical science, they, uh, they wouldn't be hindering themselves one compare, while, uh, trying to apply to other schools, and they would be able to more accurately see what they want to do. And from talking to some of my, uh, some of my friends, they also had shared the same opinion as me, and they wanted more specialization among, uh, well, in the school, and by creating, and by getting rid of the class rank, it will allow for more specialization, because now they can take, say, earth science, and because they, they're thinking about becoming a geologist, or, like I said, medical science, they want to, uh, become a doctor, or the creative writing, or any of those other classes up there. Yeah, that's pretty much all I got.
Hi, I'm Caitlin. As well as that, I can speak to the anxiety side of, um, class rank. It causes a lot of stress and pressure on students. Um, it's always there in the back of your head, you're always thinking about, oh, well, I need to be higher in my class rank, like, college is looking at that, I need that for college, um, when I could be focusing on other things like ACT or ACT that is what colleges are actually looking at, um, or extracurricular stuff like that. So the stress and it always being in the back, sorry, back of your mind, um, takes a toll on you, and especially if you're not in that top ten, um, it can hurt you in the future. And I'm here worrying about this class rank that may not even help me getting into college, as we saw, a lot of colleges don't even look at it. As long as, as well as that, it's diminishing to a lot of confidence and self-esteem in a lot of students. I'm number eight in my class, but I'm still, don't feel good enough, I feel like I could be up there more, and, and a lot of people aren't in top ten, so imagine how they feel. Diminishing to your confidence. So I think, like, getting rid of it would help a lot of students, um, and they can focus on what they, like, what they want to do, not, like you said, taking all these high AP classes, like, they can do what they want and not be worrying about this class rank always in the back of their mind, like, is this going to help me get into college when it really doesn't in a lot of cases? So I think getting rid of it would, um, be beneficial to a lot of students.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks to Amog and to Caitlin. I know that this was taking time out of their evening, and this was completely unsolicited. They knew that I was presenting this information and just asked, can I present my side of it? And I said, absolutely, we love to have student input, and I really do appreciate your honest feedback about this, because this is an important topic. This is something that they know that we've talked about throughout this entire school year, we've done quite a bit of research on, collecting data on, so thank you guys very much. Um, we did survey all of the students in our sophomore class, and we found that overwhelmingly students felt in the sophomore class that we should eliminate class rank, seventy-three percent. Forty-two percent of students in the sophomore class felt that this does cause them quite a bit of anxiety. We also surveyed our staff. Ninety-one percent of our staff felt that this is something that we should eliminate. To speak to those eight percent that felt that we should keep it, they agreed with the initial suggestions of keeping it for the sake of recognizing those top ten students. And I do value that. It is absolutely a recognition of our high achieving students. I just know that there are additional ways that we can continue to recognize our top ten students, such as recognizing them for being Illinois State Scholars and having over three-point-five and four-point-oh GPAs. So our proposal, this is something after, again, completing research throughout this school year, and we want to make sure that this is an active, you know, dialogue with really all members of our community, is that we could potentially propose, or we would like to propose, that we eliminate class rank, starting with freshmen in the class of two thousand and twenty. The reason that we're making this proposal is because these are students that do not yet have a class rank. Class rank is not assigned to students until after their first semester sophomore year. And this wouldn't impact any of the current students that we have at Westmont High School. In regards to honoring students, the recognition would still stand as far as recognizing students using the Latin system, the magna cum laude system, and the cum laude system, um, students who have over a three-point-five GPA and a four-point-oh GPA. And then we have high achieving students who would have the opportunity to be selected by a committee here at Westmont High School to present at the graduation ceremony. Many of our students over my tenure here at Westmont High School who have been recognized as valedictorian, salutatorian, have not wanted to provide a speech. And this is something that we've talked to them about, this is a great award, and we have worked with them. And this is something that we have worked with many of our students over the last twenty years. And this would eliminate that additional stress, because we have had some students who have purposely sabotaged themselves and said, I don't necessarily want to be at the top, I'm terrified of doing a speech at graduation. And I don't think that's a reason for them to not strive to be their best. We want to make sure that we continue providing a system that recognizes all of our students for their efforts and for their accomplishments, and we want to make sure that we have the best opportunity for our students here at Westmont High School, even if that includes recognizing students for students for different strengths that they have. So I thank you for the opportunity today to share this information, and wanna invite you, we're gonna have an open parent-community meeting tomorrow here at Westmont High School at 6 o'clock, to continue sharing this information in a public forum. Are there any questions at this point about this information?
I have a number of them.
Yes.
If anyone else...
Well, I just wanna make a quick statement, then you can... I'm glad you finally brought this to us, and I did use the word "finally" there. You've obviously been working on this all year, I really wish you had brought some of this information to the board earlier. It's a tremendous amount of information to suddenly thrust upon us at the end of the school year, okay? So, I'm sorry, I mean, that's just my first thought on it, and I mean, I see a lot of stats up here, and I could go through them and talk about them in different ways, but I'm not going to right now, I'm just gonna say what I said, I'm gonna let Marie make the comments.
And to respond to that, this is not anything that, we wanted to make sure that we collected this information in the most thorough, complete way that we possibly could. This is a proposal, like I said, for the current freshman class, but that decision does not necessarily need to be made on a very prompt basis. It's something that we, as a school district, could feasibly even make through the first semester of next school year, since our students are not ranked until after their first semester of sophomore year. So we, as far as planning goes, we wanted to take this time to collect this research, to survey different organizations, our staff, our students, and then begin sharing it at this time, so that we can continue obtaining feedback and your input to answer questions that you might have.
Okay, well, I have a number of questions and concerns, so again, I am happy that this was...
Can I just say something?
But yes, and I...
So, I really do appreciate Amog and Caitlin coming forward and speaking, that's part of what we wanna promote, is our students having an opinion and having the courage to speak it out loud, so, and these two students are a principal's dream, they're wonderful, and Larissa has compiled some research. But I think that what we're really just trying to give information to the board and to the community, prior to the parent meeting tomorrow night. So, from my perspective, we have not had that meeting, that will, in some ways, may alter our perspective on this. So, I think that's important to note, that we're still in the process of gathering information, listening to voices. We heard from Larissa and from our school's perspective today on where we're at with the current research from a few of our students, but I want to present the idea that we have an open mind towards this. This is not, you know, we can't really make a final proposal until we hear from our parents. And that meeting's taking place tomorrow night, we hope it's well-attended, we have publicized it, and we'll see where we go from there, too. So, I think we're very open to answering questions, but I hear concerns from the board, and I think part of that's driven by, we need time to really process this, and that's very reasonable. And we need to hear from more people, there's no doubt about it, so. But I'd like to be able to answer some of the questions tonight, and then, we really hope that people come forward tomorrow night, and then after we take all that input and process it, we will have to see where we're at.
Well, my first, just to piggyback on something Gary said, yes, I am happy that you were able to come tonight, since we had asked to have that before the parent meeting, because, again, this seemed to be something that kinda popped up and is here, it seems to me, I may feel different than many people, so that's why I have a lot of questions. So, and I also appreciate you changing the time, the initial, the additional meeting for parents was at 4 o'clock on a Friday, and that is, if the goal is really to get input from the parents, I appreciate changing that time. So, it appears from a lot of this, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there is a big push to do this, because of a lot of different things. All of this information looks to me very much like, this is why we should do it, other than two things we shouldn't, just 'cause of tradition. I noticed that, yes, some local schools have eliminated rank, and, you know, some neighboring schools down at Grove, they're not here and stuff, so I do, it just, it very much to me personally feels like, this is like, this is what we wanna do, and so we should do it. I, I feel that, a couple of things that we're interested in here. You say that one of the reasons to eliminate class rank is so that colleges will accept more students, because the colleges won't look at them, but if you look at the chart that you have for us here, the college admission factors, it shows class rank, you know, a little bit below halfway down. So, I wonder if it's eliminated, if the top factors are those other pieces, and I'm just commenting on the information that was given to us, so I wonder about that, like, if we get rid of it, why would we get rid of it? Just to hear her meow. So then, there was another thing that you had talked about, that it would not negatively impact them, and you referred to a place in Texas. So, I would like to know, this is an interesting piece to show us what schools in the area aren't doing, but as someone who has a student that's gone out of state, how would this rank our students here if they were competing with students outside of Illinois? So that would be a piece that I would find interesting to know. We say that we don't rank our students, yet our students were, in fact, all on the website, the front page of the district webpage or the high school, and all of the students did have their GPAs there, even the current freshman. So it was there, posted for kids to see, and I think you could count, you know, it didn't say who's one, who's two, but, okay, there wasn't a number next to them, but you know who's there, okay? I would also be interested to hear, so the chart that you did, that you have for us, you're speaking to the sophomores, I would be very interested to hear from the other students, because I have actually heard from some freshmen, and I would be interested to hear from, well, I mean, I know a couple of freshmen, but I would be interested to hear from students on the other side of it, because it feels to me, and I'll be honest, it feels to me like what we're saying is, if not, part of it, part of it, is if not everybody can be there, we shouldn't do it. And that seems to me particularly, to you, Jack, it seems like that sends a different message, because we want our students to achieve, and not everyone will be in the top 10. But what I start to think about is the discussion about, you know, participation, so should everyone get an award for participation, or do we want to have standards that we want, that there will be, you know, every year, somebody wins the World Series, somebody, and not everybody gets that. So that, that's a piece I'm struggling with, is the talking about that, since not everybody will get there, it's a factor. It's not the top factor, but it is one of the factors. So that, that does, I am affected by that. And the other thing that I would think is, I would like a discussion to come back to the board after you have talked to parents, because I've already heard from some parents who can't make it, but if we were going to make a change, if we were going to do that, wouldn't it be better to start with a class that's not even here?
It may be. And that, and ultimately, it is the board's decision. And I think one thing I'm hearing from the board is that we need to process this more, and I happen to agree with that, I think Larissa does, too. So, it's interesting, because I think that it is the kind of conversation that gets to some really interesting philosophical ideas about education itself. And I don't think there is just a clear-cut one way or the other. So it's gonna take us really listening and weighing the different options, and I think we have to go through that process. So, it may, it may, that's why, I guess, in part, we are seeking parent input, and maybe it's not the last time we do that. And that this is a chance for the board to get some of the ideas in front of them, but maybe, and not maybe, you request us to go back and answer certain questions, or you're asking us to do some more research, or you're asking us to do more thorough investigation about where our people in our community think, then we will do that. So, yes, this is part of the give-and-take of the process, we're at that point, if what I'm hearing is we need to slow it down, we need to slow it down. We need to make sure that whenever we come to you with a final recommendation, that we have, that you feel satisfied that the community's been heard. And you, of course, as the elected officials, need your gathering input, too, in addition to the meetings that we conduct, so.
And again, I am one board member, so I am thankful that you've brought this here to us. It just, there just seems to be, and I very much appreciate the students that came to discuss this. I, it's funny, we have the discussion about, like, one school versus another school. I will have to be frank, too, we're a small school, so we, we've also known that there are things that we can't give our students, because we don't have thousands of students. But what we do have is unmatched by any, I mean, our school is, as you know, well-received. So, it's kinda, it somewhat seems to me that we're kind of taking all of that out of there. I am the last person who wants to put any more stress on a student. You know, we don't want that in any of our students.
I think the hallmark of our community is that we are very compassionate people, and that we really care about each other, that's for certain. And that starts with the board, superintendent, I think it funnels all the way down. So, and I think Amog and Caitlin, as I say, are amazing people and students, but part of this conversation may mean that we don't completely agree with each other. And I'm not, I don't agree with everything they said tonight, and they may not agree with everything I say, but I think that's part of a healthy dialogue. So, and we just had a renowned speaker about performance under pressure on this very stage yesterday afternoon, who talked to us about a little bit of stress is actually a healthy thing. Now, there's a difference between a little stress and people feeling overwhelmed, that's something we have to consider. But we can't just say because our students are a little stressed that this is a negative thing. If we want to achieve, and you're gonna push yourself, that's part of the game. The thing we have to manage and control is too much stress. So it's an interesting conversation, and we better be preparing our students for the rigors of college, because we can know that when they get there, it's gonna be, it can be pretty stressful at times. To not set them up for success at that level would also be a disservice. So, as I say, I hear the board saying, we need to get more input. You need more time, we need to gather more information, more voices need to be heard, that's clear to us. So that is how I think we're responding to this.
Can I answer three, I know you had made three other points, I just wanna respond. Thank you again for letting us know that the initial time that the school set was not the best time. We wanna make sure that we set up the best time for a parent meeting that works for everybody. And if there's additional parents that can't make that meeting, I'm happy to speak to them, I know Jack is as well, as our other members of my department as well. We wanna make sure that we share, there's much more data that we have than this one simple PowerPoint that we put together for tonight. For example, the other research studies that other schools have shown, that have shared with us, that they've collected, that we now have in our possession. It's not just what other schools have done, because we are an exceptional school, and that's really why we started looking at what other schools have done, why have they done this, and could this make us, as a community unit, school district 201, even more exceptional? And could this improve the lives of all of our students? To address your point about starting with the class of 2020, the reason that we suggested that is because ranks do not go on their official legal transcripts until they are sophomores. That is the only time that high schools throughout the nation provide that information. So that's why we had made that proposal. But absolutely waiting a year, waiting longer, if we need to collect additional data, we're open to that. We just wanted to take this entire year to collect the research and the data that other schools had in their process, to see how would this work for us here at Westmont High School, would this benefit our students in the best way possible? And we did hear, we did have parent input on our advisory councils, but it's not the input of the entire community, which is why we wanna have that community input. We really do value everybody's input. To also talk a little bit about, you know, competition and stress and the healthy aspects of it, we have some students who strive to do the best that they can, and they start, for example, in high school with a 2.0 GPA. By the time they graduate from high school, they've made it up to a 3.2 GPA, and still they're not even in the top half of their class. And we constantly have meetings in the junior year, senior year, with students and parents, and we wanna congratulate them, because as a student, they've improved their test scores, as an individual student, they've improved their grade-point averages, freshman year, they might not have been involved in extracurriculars, and by senior year, they're involved in three clubs and two sports. And that's something that we can offer our students here at Westmont High School. As a small school, we have many students who are involved in three sports. To have a three-sport athlete at a larger school, I know many times is unheard of, they have to focus in on one sport, which really, again, is why we started this conversation and this discussion about class rank here. Could this make us even more extraordinary? And could this help our students as an individual solitary student, in that one instance, when a college or university is looking at their application, make them stand out? When a college receives, you know, thousands of applications, and they receive no other applications from Westmont High School, does that rank really matter to that college in that instance? Absolutely not. To talk a little bit about your point about different states, it was only schools in the state of Texas that responded and said that it would negatively impact a student, and actually, it was two schools, and we have that information to share tomorrow evening. Schools in California responded to us, in Massachusetts, in Florida, in Iowa, and said it does not negatively impact students at all, not to have that number listed on their official high school transcript. So, the reason that we proposed the class of 2020, our current freshman, is from a legal perspective, they do not yet have rank on their transcript, that is not added there until after their first semester sophomore year. So I hope that touches on some of your points.
It does, it does, and I will say that, again, it just, it just, it's hard to have a dialogue, really, when all of the information that's presented is why we should be doing this.
And that's why we wanted to share why to keep it and why to eliminate it. And the factors that we presented today are from the data we've collected so far, but that's why we wanna make sure that we have this open dialogue and this input from all of our board members tonight, from the parent meeting that we hold tomorrow morning, tomorrow morning, tomorrow evening, to collect more information, and if there are additional factors, if there are things that maybe we did not think of that we need to add to this, we're happy to do that, to consider it.
So, two things, Jack, I appreciate you talking about yesterday, because I feel that, because I like to say I look at what is happening, and it looked to me that discussion about stress and that, I found it incredible, and I just wish I was able to make it, to come to the one that the parents were invited to, but it seemed like that is something that everybody needs to hear, that some stress is okay, and working through that stress is something that will only help you in life. There's very few people that can say they have no stress, they're probably not telling you the truth. So it seems as though that discussion is somewhat, somewhat different than what we have here in front of us. So, again, I, and I, when I say, like, the current freshman class, what I mean is, if this decision ever goes forward, I would, if it doesn't, if it's not made till next year, then I would just say, all of the students, if it's, if there's gonna be a change, I, my opinion would be that it would be with whatever the next incoming class is, because it's, it's one thing to say that it's not on their rankings, but these kids know where they are. know where they are. You know, they know what their rank is. And one more thing, and then maybe I'll shut up. But the, the discussion about the valedictorian and that, you know, maybe if we're looking to do something different, maybe that job does not have to go to one and two. It could be that that is, doesn't, you know, you, you spoke about that though, that there have been particular students that didn't want to. Well, maybe they don't have to, if, just because they're one and two, and, you know, maybe that could be something that we find as a district, a different way to do it. I don't know what that is, I'm just saying.
Some schools allow the class to vote on who they want to speak.
Well, that.
Some school, that's an option.
Other schools have the staff vote on, you know, a senior leader.
Right. Or have, you know, we currently have two, two, well, we have four now this year. So, you know, if it's, if it's something that is, is specifically causing, you know, somebody doesn't want that, or if, or if there are situations where kids, they don't want to give a speech, so they intentionally.
You can give a real short speech.
They don't have to speak.
Yeah.
You know, so, anyway, that's my thing. And I'm just, I'm just sharing, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll add a little bit to this, and, you know, just seeing it tonight, I'm still kind of ruminating on it and thinking about it. You know, we spend a lot of time at the board table and, and talking about the growth model, and how that is the key to success for your students down the road. We talk about the AP and the challenges of that, and reaching, you know, farther, and testing, you know, the, the depth of your capacity to learn something that might be exceptionally challenging for you. So, class rank, in my mind, has nothing to do with measuring that kind of growth or progress in a student. You alluded to it a little bit, somebody coming in with kind of low, and they work harder and they build it up. So, you know, that measure of success in where a student begins, and where they end up, and that rate of growth that you see, for me, is more significant than always being at the top. And I guess that's just, you know, on kind of a short-term thought about it. I think we all know students, and you can kind of identify them, you know, early on in, in elementary school, when you see them, they're consistent, top performers. But do they display that same growth that some of our students who aren't top performers experience over the course of their education in District 201? So, for me, I'd like to see some sort of growth component, you know? And I don't know how you exactly measure that. I mean, we do it on our assessments and our map testing and things like that. But I mean, that's a key, and that's something that we talk about or hear about all the time, as being very important. So, I don't have my mind made up on this, but, but, you know, I expect if a parent meeting happen, is happening tomorrow, you'll have parents that are very passionate about it possibly show up, and parents who don't, you know, eh, they're not going to, they're not going to show up. You know, so how do you get feedback from parents who are just eh on the topic? You know, because it doesn't really matter, or it's not that important to them or their students, or they don't feel, for whatever reason, that it's the most accurate measurement of student achievement. So, I don't know, it's something to think about as far as gathering some additional information. How do you make sure you really surveyed your total parent population, you told student pa, I mean, you did do a, a vote kind of with the students.
But you're right, we haven't done a blanket entire student, uh, parent survey. That's, I mean, what you're suggesting, I think, is, makes sense.
And to touch on that student growth, one of the other pieces of data that we did look at throughout this year is to see how many of our students did make growth in their rank, as well as in grade point average. And overwhelmingly, we could see that there was a trend when we looked at this, as far as grade point average goes. Many of our students did improve their grade point average from freshman year on through senior year. And unfortunately, we cannot ever have data to support that our students made that growth in rank, because there are always going to be students in the top half, and then there are always going to be students in the bottom half. So, rank will never show. I mean, rank will never show that student growth. But maybe there are other ways for us to consider showcasing student growth, other than grade point average, student test scores, I'm not sure. That's, that's definitely some of the, you know, reasons we need to have more of these conversations, and your, and your feedback.
I just, can I just, I just want to get some clarification here. I'm going to assume, since the report here actually favors getting rid of ranks, that's because the data backs it up. So you're showing that it, that data backs up getting rid of the ranks as opposed to keeping it. And also, I think, didn't you mention that there's, there's other ways that we could reward those students?
Yes.
That are in the top percent of the class.
We already do.
We don't need to see one student be the number one, and the one student be the lowest.
Correct.
We, you know, we can find other ways to do that.
Correct. And we already use the Latin system. Since Westmont High School began, we've utilized the Latin system here as part of our graduation ceremony. We use the cum laude and magna cum laude as part of the award ceremony that we provide, and it's listed for students on the bottom of the graduation booklet. And students have specific cords that they wear to recognize them as earning over a 3.5 or a 4.0 GPA. So sometimes we have to encourage our students, yes, we know that you're currently at this rank, but let's focus on this grade point average and increase your grade point average. An attainable goal might not be to be in the top 10% of your class. However, you could receive these additional cords at graduation, you could be recognized for having over a 3.5 grade point average, or a 4.0 grade point average, which really is one of the top things that colleges and universities do look at across the nation.
And I'm sorry, this is. The rank, like, truthfully, may not represent, ranks may not truly represent the student how well they're doing, especially if you have one freshman going on up to senior year, really doing well, could be competitive with someone who's had straight A's all along. So, okay.
Okay.
And this is on the transcript?
Their grade point average is on their transcript.
The class rank?
The class rank is currently on their transcript.
So, our student who is 110 out of 110, it shows up on their.
Yes.
On their transcript as well.
Yes.
Couple of questions. First of all, you had that, that chart you just had up, slide 10. On this, what it's saying is that class rank is of moderate or considerable importance to 58% of the schools. On the next slide, we're saying that 73% don't consider it important. Don't those conflict?
They do. This was from 2013, which is why we reached out and received data. We said, okay, this is information we have at this point, which is what some of the other schools we collected data from that had gone through this process, shared with us. And this is the most recent source of chart information from the National Association of College Admission Counseling. They update this, this next school year, so we'll have a new one to share coming up in the fall. But that's why we did our own survey and sent it out through the Illinois Association for College Admission Counseling, which then surveys out to all of the colleges and universities in the nation. So it is, it is absolutely different data. This is one, though, that we wanted to share, just in the, it, the order of importance is still the same.
Sure. Okay. Is inclusion of the class rank on the transcript optional? And I mean that per student. Not, not like we could either do it or not do it as a school, but could a student opt to include it or not include it on their transcript?
It's not.
The general practice is if you rank students, then the class rank is part of it.
Yes.
If you didn't rank students, then it wouldn't.
And that's something that we would add to our school profiles. Schools that have already eliminated class rank, they add to their school profile, this has been a decision made in our school district, we no longer rank students, and they would not, you know, see a discrepancy. For example, if they received two student transcripts from Westmont High School, one had a rank, one didn't have a rank, they would ask, or then that student would be negatively impacted.
Okay. So universally, all the students would either have to have it or not have it, but if we co, if we calculate class rank, is there an obligation to include in the transcript? Meaning, could we have class rank, but globally not have it on their transcripts? So, in the example that you had, if the class rank is not there, the university may reach out to the school to get additional information on the student. At that point, the school could opt to say, yes, they had a class rank of this, but we don't include them on transcripts. Is that, is that an option?
Not certain.
Yeah, that's something we have to investigate. These are the kind of questions.
Yes.
So now, but.
Here's kind of my thing. I, I went to Lyons Township, bigger school, like magnitude of 10, right? And I was a number there. And maybe I'm a couple standard deviations out of the norm, but, I mean, I can say with confidence and without being dramatic, that I think if it wasn't for class rank, I wouldn't be here right now. And I mean that on the school board, I mean, the profession that I have, and a lot of other things. I flew under the radar. People didn't know me. And I'm talking, I have, one of my kids had a classmate whose parent was in my class, who I knew from grade school up, had no idea who I was. So, my kid's first day of school, I'm there, I'm like, hey, I remember you, and I'm saying hi and all that, no idea who I was. Right? So, I wasn't in extracurriculars at the school. The school wouldn't have been able to say much of anything, other than, you know, I was a student of the month a number of times, stuff like that, my grades were this. My extracurriculars were outside of the school. And I did a number of things, but nothing that, had the school been contacted, they would have been able to say anything about. In fact, administration, I have confidence, had no idea who I was at the point of graduation. So, but that, that is a different world. You know, Jack, you know most of the kids before they start. You know, and, and that is a different thing. And, and my experience is different than a lot of other, and like I say, I think there's a, there's a whole other end of this. But, you know, and, and the stress for me is a really important thing, I think, for a lot of people. I think more and more, we're seeing people that can't deal with stress, that they're, they're quicker to, to come to anger, to fight things, to, to pursue legal resolutions, stuff like that, instead of being able to discuss and debate and deal with the stress. I mean, we, up here, we're dealing with, you know, and, and in my job, and in my other things in the neighborhood, I mean, it's, there's a lot of things that are very good, a lot of great people, a lot of very rewarding things, but there's also a lot of irrationality that comes your way. People that can't deal with the situations that they're presented with, and they lash out. And, and I just, I worry that more and more, you know, when we start talking about, you know, kids' sports and not keeping track of score, and all these other kinds of things. And like Marie mentioned, kind of the, the participation ribbons. I, I get concerned for the students where this is their opportunity. And, and I agree, and I appreciate the, the point where, you know, about having to pick and choose your classes because you're concerned with rank, as opposed to doing something you're interested in. I think that's not right. And that's why I mentioned, Jack, when you brought up the AP Biology, I commented that I thought that was a wonderful thing, because it gave students an opportunity to pursue something they might be interested in, and still get a higher level of credit for it. When I started at high school, I did not understand the class rank program. So at the end of the first semester, I, I had made some decisions, I didn't realize the impact, and that was it. Because we had seven people tied for rank one. It was incredibly fierce competition, and, and there was, there's no recovering after that. So I think understanding going in is important, but, you know, it, there may have been classes I would have liked to have taken others. I'm, I'm kind of arguing both sides of this, but a lot of it is saying, I, I think there's a lot of value to it if we can take away the detrimental parts. A lot of the stress, likely, I think, is because of feeling like, this is, if this shows up on my transcript, then this may impact negatively my ability to get into the school of my choice. So, one of my thoughts is that if we take that aspect of it away, if this is an option, to not include class rank on the transcript universally, but still have it something that's available, it still would give those students an opportunity to excel, if they want to. The other student made the comment about being, you know, eighth in the class, and felt like she could have done better. What does that really say? She has a desire to do better. She feels like she could have done better. Yes, it was stressful, yes, but, but there was, she wanted to do better. And how would she have any visibility to that without a class rank? And it, maybe eight is disappointing to her, whereas others are like, I would kill to be ranked eight. But, but still, it's showing that drive and that motivation, and I hate to take that away from the students that would want to use that as their pursuit, you know, they, you're in, you were up here several times tonight, that was great. You know, but other, other kids aren't. And, and that's, that's their opportunity. They can be, they can be quiet and just kind of do their thing, but that's where they can excel and.
I worry, granted, and, and you know Joel's point, showing progress. I mean, I know, it used to be the presidential awards used to recognize most improved in fitness over the high school period, I don't know if they still do that, and I think recognizing things like that, I think, would be fantastic. I think those are great additions, but I don't know if they need to replace class rank. So, I, I, I respect where you guys are going with this. I, I love what you've been doing at the schools, that, that speaks volumes, and I don't necessarily want to get in the way of something like this, because, you know, I trust, you know, what you're going to be recommending. I just wanted to propose some other thoughts on this.
And I'm happy to look into, if we weren't to, for example, and I'm not certain if we can or cannot, that's something I'm happy to research, but if it wasn't listed on their transcript, but we still had it, to, how, I don't know exactly how necessarily that would be shared with students. Because it is shared for the first time with them, when they get their transcripts after first semester sophomore year. I'm, I'm not certain of the best answer to that, so.
This is a complex issue.
It is.
People can be on both sides in the same conversation. We need to slow this down, we need to get more input, and then we need to get some of the questions you've asked tonight answered, and we need to have an ongoing dialogue about this. That's what I'm coming away from, what I hear from the board.
I would like to see a little bit more fair, balanced presentation brought to the parents. I don't think some of the information I'm seeing here is actually balanced. I think I'm seeing, what Marie was saying, more of a one-sided. So I'd like to see somehow you guys presenting a little bit more of the case for the other side, or tone it down a little bit.
What can I add to the other side?
Well, I, I don't know, like, I'm looking at the Westmont High School rigorous courses, and we're calling aquatics art exploration. Is that really a rigorous course? I imagine it's a tough course, but rigorous, to me, is what you got on the other side. Your medical science, the computer application, forensic science, that sounds like a rigorous course to me. Aquatics does not sound like a rigorous course to me. Okay? I'm just, I'm just saying. Okay? Might be, might be the toughest class we have in the building, I don't know, it just doesn't sound it. And.
To speak to these classes, these are all.
I, I, I really don't want an answer to them, I'm just, just giving you some examples. Okay? I'm just giving you some examples, really. Other than that, I would say, you know, tomorrow, it's great that you're having the meeting tomorrow, it's May, there's, as we know, there was a number of students who couldn't attend, attend tonight because they had work obligations or other school obligations. We have parents tomorrow that have the exact same thing. So, I, I'd almost like to see another meeting or two, maybe not before the end of the year, maybe one of the beginning of the school year would be better, when we're introducing the, the, you know, the students to everything that's going on. Maybe that would be a, a good time to hold a second meeting and get some more information out there to the parents. Because I, I, for one, I can't attend tomorrow. Just as an example. Okay? My wife can't either, because she has to go to the band meeting for the Germany trip. So, I'm just, right there off the top, there's two parents who can't, who can't show up.
I'm happy to have multiple meetings. If we need to have additional meetings, you know, now in the spring, throughout the summer, next fall, I'm happy to collect additional data and to answer many of the questions that you guys have brought up this evening. I think that these are valid questions and ones that we as a school need to address, so that we feel like we have all of the information that we need. And to quickly touch on this, these are all of our non-AP and honors classes at Westmont High School. This is the complete list of non-AP and honors classes.
Quick thing, I don't, I don't know if this is possible, I, I don't know what we do with this, but, out of curiosity, would it be possible, and I'm guessing no, but, to compile the, the student survey and to correlate to the, the current rank of the students that gave responses? Meaning, and, you know, this is, this is not going to be a popular thing to say, maybe, but I, I would suspect that there's a correlation of students who are lower ranked in the class having much less interest in there being a class rank. Where, and, and contrary to the fact that we had two top 10 students up here arguing against it, right? And that, that's great. But I'm curious, of the other students in the, the higher percentage of the class, how many of them would agree? I mean, if that's a high percentage, that, that's very telling. I mean, I'd be very interested in seeing that. If it's a low percentage, I'd be interested in seeing that as well. I'm, I'm curious if, if that's, and I don't expect you to know off the top of your head, but I mean, if that's a possibility, that's something I would, I would like to see.
Not with the surveys that we conducted. We conducted anonymous student surveys to get honest feedback from students.
Sure.
So, that is something that we could redo in additional surveys to our students. And the reason we surveyed our sophomore students is because they are the ones that just had obtained class rank this school year.
Sure.
Can I, I just want to ask, ask two more things. I know you are saying that they get their class rank in sophomore year, but you do know that the, like, the current freshmen know where they are.
I am aware of that.
Okay, I'm just, I just, you, 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 you brought up the sophomores. It would be interesting to, to, again, if we're, if we're going to do, compare apples to apples, to get maybe all the students, freshmen, junior, and seniors as well, their, you know, input. And it would be interesting to know, I like, one of the things that Matt's saying, it would be interesting to know of the study, of the survey, how many, like, of the class, how many answered, how many didn't answer, you know what I mean? Because we all know how that is. If you want to be really vocal about something, you're gonna, you know, I grew up on the South Side of Chicago, but early vote often. So, that one chart, it would be good to see, you know, things that could be balanced with that, with the other students in the school. And then the other thing is, when, and I didn't even think about this, but when we look at these other classes, because listening to what the students are saying, that they don't have the opportunity to take these classes because they're only looking at the GPA, or, I wonder if, two things, I wonder if, if we're not taking any of these only because of class rank, or are we not taking any of these because of the way they're weighted? Because I think those are two different conversations. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
Because if we're, if we're saying we're going to get rid of rank, so that the students can take these things, I wonder if that is what's happening? Or, is there, boy, this is really throwing, is there some way to make these classes more attractive to students who want to take these classes, but they don't? So, I guess I go back to, are the kids not taking these because of rank, or they're not taking these because of GPA?
The feedback we received was, was that they are not taking it because of class rank. Students knew that they were, if they took, for example, medical science and received an A, they would receive a 4.0 GPA, that would still help their GPA, they'd be above a 4.0. Whereas, taking that class with a 4.0, because it's wait, not weighted, it would lower their class rank potentially. So, many of our students did opt to take an AP Biology or an AP Physics, instead of trying out and seeing, is medical science really something for them?
It's a complex issue, though, because if you don't weight graded for more rigorous courses, and I really do appreciate Gary's point, not all courses are of the same rigor. You run a danger of students trying to elevate their GPA by avoiding rigorous courses. This is a complex issue. And what I hear loud and clear from everybody is, we need to slow down, listen, gather more input, and before we come back to you again.
I think, yeah, a quick comment on what Marie said. I think that is an interesting idea, and I feel like I have heard of this before, although I don't, maybe not at the high school, although I don't recall. But, but I think that would be an interesting consideration, if possible, realizing that would probably be very challenging. But if there would be a way to augment these classes to increase their weighting, so to add rigor to them, you know, to have a supplementary aspect to them for students...
It's, it's, it's an imperfect system, that's why so many schools have gotten away from it, but not everybody has, that's true, to offer a balanced approach. We did add an honors choir and band component, with that very thought in mind. Why would students who are taking band all four years, or choir, be, that will negatively impact their GPA? So, we have made that adjustment, because we don't think that should happen.
Yes.
The point is, how often do you do that? Where do you do that? Do you do that for everything? We did that also for our accounting program, because there was a level of rigor, and we could differentiate it and put it at college course level.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, because that was something I was thinking about before. By adding that, that, that the different band and choir things, it does allow the students who, you know, our goal is to try to provide as much for as many students as we can. So, if you've got students that are involved in that, that they are getting, you know, and the rigor that goes along with it, it's not, we're just like, we're not just saying, okay, poof, it's, you know, something, you are, you're adding the rigor to it too, you're not just elevating the numbers.
And specifically to the band and the choir, once we added that, throughout this most recent course selection process, we had, I would say, elevated levels of stress in students who were trying to pick out, for example, their junior, senior year classes, saying, I'm already taking three AP classes, I've got another honors class here, now that there is an honors band or an honors choir, I know there's going to be additional work in that, can I handle that much? But if I don't, my rank might potentially be lower, so now I have to, so now I have to figure out, how can I balance this high intense level of work? Are we really giving our students an inopportune way to not be successful in those classes, because they're taking on too much? And so, that's another thing that we have to, again, talk about and see, what is the best balance for our students? If they're worried about having too many AP classes and honors classes, and now with an additional, say, we changed all of these to honors classes, we would have some students that would feel like they are not doing enough, they are not taking on enough for themselves, and that might not be a healthy level for them to...
Well, I get, you know, what's interesting, what you just said there, though, it seems like we're saying two different things. We're adding these, like, the band and choir things, because I remember when we did, because students who are asking for that opportunity to take that, so that's why this is so complex. Because you can't by the same token say, well, we don't want our kids stressed, so we, you know what I mean? It's, it's, it's not that simple, it's very...
It's complex. We also have students that have no honors classes ever, and now that with, with this additional band or choir, they can say that, yes, they've taken an honors or a, you know, an honors band or an honors choir, that's their one honors class throughout high school. We want to recognize the fact that they have had an honors class in high school.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I don't think we should be allowing comment.
Thank you, but I, well, he spoke during the thing, should we...
Not that we don't want to hear what you have to say, it's just protocol for the meeting.
Yeah, protocol for what we're, what we're...
At the, we're having a second comments at the...
Yeah, you know what, there's, there's a public comment coming up very soon. So, can, if you can hold that thought to that time, that would be good. Okay, well, thank you for, thank you for listening today, thank you for your feedback. Does any other board member want to?
No.
More, we just need more info.
I think that, and then you said the survey was sophomore?
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, junior and senior are really going to be thinking about this more? I mean, I know you start thinking about it on your pathway through high school, but, you know, maybe some feedback from that level on how it impacted them? Did they actually feel the, the stress because of, because of this particular component would be good as well?
Absolutely.
I don't know freshman and sophomore level feedback, they may have not thought enough about it, you know, just kind of beginning their journey in high school.
Or not into it, really, not very into it, you know?
I'm just not sure how the question should read.
Yeah, you know, a quick point, I think he can speak, he's part of this presentation.
No, just let him speak at the public time.
Well, that's what we were, that's what we were kind of talking about. So, I, I mean, we don't want to... Let's, let's just do, let's do it on air. See, the, the thing that, the other piece that I want to just ask is that, I am happy to hear you say, Jack, that, like, that it's not just one board meeting, one parent meeting, and then it's done. Because I think there's so much here that, that it does need to be looked at, like, you know, and presented in a, in a way that, because as I read the email, it sounded like, this is what we're considering, and here's all the reasons for it, and so, we're gonna, you know, this is what we're, what we're doing. And I, and I, I understand that the, that what you have brought in this slide presentation does show why. It would be, what we're, what the, some of the conversations we're having here would be, it's, it's not just black and white, it's not just yes or no. If there's some way of finding, you know, dealing with the valedictorian, you know, dealing with that differently, dealing with some of these other classes in terms of rigor of those classes, to let the students get what they need, to teach them how to, we've been talking about rigor so much in this district for a long time. I hate for us to go back from that. That's, I guess, my biggest fear.
I really appreciate, this is a little messier maybe than we thought, but I think it's checks and balances in a healthy democratic way. You've been amazingly supportive of our initiatives, so has Kevin. The board's been incredible. You see this, so you say, wait a second, guys, you need to slow this down. So, that's, I think that's democracy in action. That's beautiful to me, and we need to get more input, and that's exactly what we'll do. And we'll do it, and, you know, we'll keep doing it, so...
And we'll keep sharing this out. This isn't, I, I hope that didn't come across as one and done in the informational description for the parent meeting, and I apologize if that was the case in how it came across. We've done this slowly this school year. We've collected this survey data slowly, we've talked to, you know, the different organizations from colleges and universities, slowly, we've collected this, we've discussed it through our guidance advisory councils, and this is really the first time that we bring it today to the board, and we want to continue bringing this information to you and sharing as much information with you as we have available, and we'll continue collecting that. So, thank you for your input. I'll look into the part about the transcripts, and I will absolutely collect additional data from our juniors, junior students as they're going into their senior year. I think this is valuable data that would help us, and really help all of us, see what are the different components, and it is a complicated process. It isn't something that is going to be one and done, that's not at all what I wanted to propose today. I wanted to make sure that I had an opportunity to share, here's what we've collected so far, and how can we move forward, what additional information do you need, what else can we do to, you know, do what's best for our students?
I think that's why the question, should we get rid of class rank? That seems like it's a yes or no. But it seems as though from this conversation, are there other things we can do, not just class rank? Because that's, so the answer is what, yes, no? It just seems like there's so many other things.
And I'll change this for tomorrow, based on today's feedback. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any? Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, presentation, is that right? Presentation of monthly financial statement.
Good evening, we have two months presented tonight, so very quickly, the month of February, we received $120,000 from the state for FY17, and then another, almost $12,000 for FY16. State continues to be behind. There were $639,000 of FY17 payments owed to the district at the end of February. And obviously, we received, part of that is in the ed fund, and the rest of it is in the transportation fund. And expenditures in our funds are trending as they have been for the entire year compared to prior years. In the month of March, we received another $111,000 from the state, and $100,000 of that was in the ed fund, and $10,000 of that was in the transportation fund. The state vouchedered the third quarter mandated categoricals, so they owe the district $923,000 as of the end of March, with $548,000 of that due in the ed fund, and $375,000 in the transportation fund. I cannot recall the last time that the state has been this far behind in payments, it's been a long, long time. Fortunately, we have sufficient cash reserves to be able to make our payments without relying on the state this year. So, we hope that they will catch up. They did send us some money in April, so we'll report on it at the next meeting. But again, and expenditures are, you know, running as they have been for all the funds throughout the year. So, investments, fund balance, student activity reports are there. Does anybody have any questions?
Kim, if you could look in a, in a crystal ball, and that's a good way to start a sentence. Do you, is there anything that you're hearing in the business community, why they're so, I mean, you know, it's Illinois and the state?
There hasn't been a budget for two years, there's still, you know, there's still a lot of infighting about pensions and, you know, school funding reform and things like that, and so, I think a lot of those issues are holding up our, our, the ability for the state to pay. And whether there'll be a property tax freeze, whether there's going to be a personal income tax increase, I mean, all those things are coming, coming into play, and neither side is, is willing to compromise, to make things work.
Okay. Thank you. Any other question? Okay, then we'll move on to the action items. The first, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the recommended revisions to the elementary, junior high, and high school student handbooks as presented.
So moved.
Second. And roll call, please.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Knapp Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Ms. Ambrose.
Yes.
Mrs. Charlton.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next action item, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the JT Manning Elementary Title I school-wide waiver as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Knapp Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Ms. Ambrose.
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yes.
Mrs. Charlton.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the third one, the chair will entertain a motion to authorize and direct the treasurer to pay any bills received in May 2017 that have been budgeted for the 2017 fiscal year.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Knapp Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Ms. Ambrose.
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Charlton.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, superintendent's report?
Couple of items in my report. First, the joint committee met on May 2nd, and each of the subcommittees met and then updated the joint committee, the climate committee reviewed the data from the District Five Essential Survey. The committee also reviewed a proposal to have Rachel challenge assemblies at each of the schools this fall, and the climate committee began the process of updating, or rather, that's the Public Relations Committee began the process of updating each school's brag sheet. They're also discussing promoting district events on the Westmont Village calendar. Street Plan Committee continued to finalize the district plan, and the Facility and Finance Committee reviewed the summer building projects. Some work will be done at the high school, junior high, and Manning, and then there will be landscaping upgrades at all district schools this summer. So, much less that could be going on than other summers. And then, one other item, the Village of Westmont notified us that they're going to repair the alley behind Manning. They're actually, we found out today, they're actually going to start June 7th, so school ends June 6th. They're going to close the alley, begin working on it June 7th. It'll take approximately 10 weeks, which is going to take us pretty close to the start of the school year, so pretty much all summer. And so, that alley would not be usable for the duration of the summer.
Kevin, are they doing the brick pavers like they did on the other side?
Yes, they're doing brick pavers.
Not the parking lot, though?
No, no, just the alley.
Okay.
Thank you, Village of Westmont.
Yes. Okay, is that it, Kevin?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, are there any board reports? All right, are there any public comments? All right, upcoming meeting and events, the Westmont High School Spring Band and Choral Concert and Student Exhibit will be May 18th at 7 o'clock here at Westmont High School. Westmont Junior High School Spring Choral Concert will be May 23rd at 7 o'clock at Westmont High School. The high school graduation will be May 30th at 7 o'clock at Westmont High School. The junior high school graduation will be June 2nd at 7 o'clock, also here at the high school.